Superbowl Park.
Superbowl Park you brought in our society.
Because it wasn't what a man, uh, what is trying to do.
That was against the town.
Oh, right.
Actually, it's the ones in seventy years, but it wasn't proper.
Suburban Park.
It was clear.
It was very clear.
I don't know what happened. It was finally done.
You're the person I.
We just, we just always need to document what we have, put rationale on it. So there's no question about it was or why. The more rationale you get on the record, the better it is. So we're turning around to somebody. Are we up? Good evening.
Everybody's over here.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was a test to see if we're awake. Yeah, it was. So many years it stood there and now let's move. Folks, the first item on our agenda tonight is approval of our minutes of the meeting conducted on April eleventh.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of April eleventh.
Motion to make, and second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm saying.
One up the statue. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is an application by Dr. David LaCastro. This is scheduled today for public hearing. And he is seeking the site plan and accessory use permit for what's known as the Palmer House, seventy-one eighty-nine East Genesee Street, Fayetteville. Madam Secretary, did we properly publish the notice of buyer?
Yes, we did.
Does anybody want to have that read?
I like motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive, second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Leading this wave. Before we proceed forward with opening the public hearing, we normally always try to be secret. So we're going to proceed forward with secret.
Okay, and here are the questions for the board. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No, or minimal.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and that's to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private water wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
All of the questions been answering as small or no impact. The chair can entertain a motion for negative secret declaration.
I would entertain such a motion. For a negative secret? Motion made by Arnie, second by Valerie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously for negative secret declaration. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. And second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is hereby open for anybody who would like to put some input in regarding the Palmer House. Mr. Shep.
Evening. Our family owns the funeral home right next door to this. They just want to go on record. Long before the doctor even submitted a purchase offer, he contacted me to find out what issues were with the property. He's been a true gentleman through the whole thing, developed the plan, shared it with me before he even approached town. What he's proposing, I think, is a great use for the property and wholeheartedly recommend that you approve it. There are a few issues that I want to get on record, however, concerning this after having read the county planning board report. This property I originally owned before we built the funeral home. And I subdivided off the land that the current funeral home is built on and sold the Palmer House to an interior designer. We created, we designed and created the cut through that is being formally proposed tonight. The reason we did that is it served both of us. When we have a funeral that is going to end with a procession to the cemetery, we block off our exit, forcing everyone to enter under the portico so that we can find out if they want to be a part of the procession or they just want to attend the service. It channels all traffic to where we have control. If someone wants to leave, we use the side entrance as a way out. For the Palmer House, it served as a great use to make a loop around because as it currently exists, it's a little bit difficult to turn around any vehicle larger than a normal passenger car. The owner, the Dr. LaCastro bought it from, decided he did not want the cut through. And we, in the meantime, established our own back entrance out to Hunt Drive. It made absolutely no difference to us whether this cut through was there or not. It created a lot of problems for the Palmer House property. Trucks couldn't come in, turn around, and get out easily. The landscapers with their trailers, they couldn't get in there and turn around at all. They began parking on our property, which I promptly ended because I didn't create the problem. Now, your working force created the problem. And then started parking on Genesee Street, blocking off the lane of Genesee Street. The police had a big problem with that. This cut through is good for both properties. It's just now that we're getting around it formally, they're putting the easement in place. The other issue is the catch basin on the property. County Planning Board, I think, has the impression that's part of the community system. There is no community system in the area. The rainfall comes down Genesee Street from on top of the hill and Hunt Drive is lower in its entrance than Genesee Street. All the water comes in there. Till about twenty years ago, it just dissipated onto the lawns and perked in. Dentist on the corner put in a parking lot about twenty years ago and would not maintain a curb or a hump to keep the water going. It's very smooth to drive down in. All the water from that hill comes down, enters into his parking lot, fills up the parking lot. So he bypassed this stormwater management system with a pipe that now drains everything to my neighbor's property, which drains the Palmer House property, which then drains into our parking lot. I've talked with Doug's predecessor, I've talked with Doug, I've talked with the town highway superintendents. There's nothing that can be done. The state certainly isn't going to put in any drainage system there. So rather than watching water just cascade across our parking lot in the winter freeze, I extended our underground stormwater management system to a catch basin. That's the catch basin we're talking about. The issue I had, I'm already taking care of other people's stormwater runoff in our property. I didn't want any additional. Doug assures me after reviewing the plans that the underground storage, the crushed stone and everything, will take, will mitigate anything that this hard surface is creating. So as long as we have that on the record, we're just going to maintain the status quo. Would that be accurate, Doug?
Yes.
Do you have to, is it already in place, this crushed stone?
No, that's what they're proposing.
With the.
That little swale.
Yeah. That swale is going to fill up with water from outside of his property. I can assure you of that.
Doug, when's that one the dentist has up the road, is that the same type of thing? One in the corner?
The one that found it, uh, Conis's. He did the same thing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it worked.
And he gave, he was a letter that you also.
That Tom has a term, is a possible condition if we approve this project. We're going to mandate recording of that easement, mutual easement between you and the new owner. Are you okay with that?
It's signed, it's done.
I have, my copies are signed by me and his copy is signed by him. Tomorrow, my office manager, we asked for you, but it's easier. My office manager, Margaret Colley.
Yep.
I'll just sign Tom's copies, we'll have him sign and I'll have Courtney report it.
I do have my notary stamp here.
You want me to do it right now?
When we're done here. Yeah. I can do that, but yeah. I mean, they can be compiled probably in counterpart, but we can do it. We can make sure that it's done.
Whatever you want, but they're done. He signed one, I signed one, we're good.
My understanding is that we have three easements here.
Yes.
We have a reciprocal easement for the drive-through, which allows each party to go onto the other part of the property versus property.
Yes.
We have the parking easement in the back, we have the drainage easement. Is that all part of the easement that has been signed?
Yes.
There's no drainage.
There's no drainage, but the part of the plans.
There is an easement for me to go on to his property, him to go on my property, and then to take care of the issue of the five spaces back. Those are the three easements.
But doesn't this water drain onto your property?
That's what I was just trying to explain. That is not a community drain. Anything that is currently going into that catch basin, I am treating on my property.
However, some of the water that is going to end up on the dentist or on the Palmer House property is going to drain to your property, is that correct?
In theory, there shouldn't be any additional runoff, am I correct, Doug?
That's correct.
He is mitigating his new creation. I don't have an issue with that. I just want the board to understand and be on record. I'm already treating and mitigating other people's water. I don't want any more.
That's what's been done in that, that whole quarter.
Okay, okay. So it's a reciprocal easement for the the driveways and then the five parking spaces.
We're just formalizing what's been practiced for thirty years.
No, and I know it's been an issue, so I'm glad this is getting done.
Yeah, I mean, how the previous owner viewed this, I never received a satisfactory, you know, explanations or. The nature I immediately saw, we're just going to keep this open because it's everyone's mutual.
I agree, I agree.
I remember that too, so it's good that this is working very well.
Thank you for what you and the doctor have done.
Yep.
That's what we like when people put their heads together.
Well, the doctor was the one who initiated the whole thing. I mean, he was very proactive in the beginning.
You decided during the Super Bowl, I got a text message. They were going to playoff game, and I have all these detailed drawings of Tom and I go, tired. They gave me three options.
That's going to the bottom of the game.
They would have not supposed to do like.
Thank you, Tom, thank you.
That's a great resolution.
I just, I have one other series of questions. I'll be curious, why are we here tonight?
We're here for a public hearing regarding accessory use permit and the site plan approval.
The site plan, you need a site plan?
We do.
Okay. So does every property, whenever anything is done, need a site plan review here?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I wonder if you wanted to say add a porch to it. Would you need a site plan review?
That's a good, I don't know, I think there's, there are some exceptions to it, but I don't know if that is an exception.
I remember they had one on Wickers.
Right, there was a site plan review.
There are stuff, there are some changes that are minor. We look at it to make sure it doesn't need site.
If you wanted to say pay more land for parking, would you need a site plan?
Most likely.
If you wanted to just replace an existing stoop at the front door, would you need a site plan review?
Replacement, usually not.
If you wanted to expand it, make it larger?
Maybe, but there, but there's an exception of, that I'd have to look at.
If you wanted to make the stoop in the front yard larger and it was within the front yard setback, would you need a site plan review?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Then I guess I'm back to my original question, what are we doing?
There's significant changes to the site and there's an accessory use permit that's required.
This is totally different than the application that we were considering four or five years ago, Tom. That fellow wanted to do nothing for you. And he wanted to do everything against you. You say you never got an explanation of what he was doing. This board never got an explanation of what he was doing. We did not approve anything for him.
What I'm referring to, Mr. Chairman, are issues that took place even before that.
That might predate me.
Well, in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen, a permit was issued to rip off the front stoop of this building and almost tripled its size. It lays, the building is only thirty-four feet from the property line. So the first sixteen of the building are in the front yard setback. Obviously built in eighteen oh six, it predates any zoning, so it's a grandfather use. But I'm curious.
It's grandfathered until you alter it. Once you alter it, you lose the grandfather status.
Okay. So how was a permit issued to triple the size of the stoop? A porch was added on to the west side of the building. Parking was increased. I asked the codes enforcement officer, I thought he needed a site plan review. No, you don't, he can do all this just by a simple permit.
I would, I would have said you need to have site plan approval. Absolutely. I, I don't know how they did it. It wasn't during my watch and I doubt that it was during many.
And I don't know which, we hit the wrong third code enforcement officer in the last ten years. I don't actually know which one said that.
Brandon.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, this is the fourth time in thirty years I've asked the same series of questions. So I'm curious as to what validity does a site plan have? The house to my other side. Nowhere near the approved site plans. And the attorney for the town told me at that hearing, seven years ago, that this board can't deal with what has or has not been done. You can only deal with what's in existence.
Can you call me afterwards? I want to have a talk with you.
Sure.
Yeah. Maybe with you too, Jay.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know a lot of what he's asking about, so.
Now, I just want to be very clear. These are all issues that I have with the town. Has nothing to do with Dr. Gray Astro.
No, we understand that.
Totally, a pure gentleman. And I highly recommend that you approve what he wants to do.
All right, you're raising issues that are concerned to me and I want to talk to you in more depth.
Okay.
Okay, Tom.
Thank you. And I want to put it up, oh, is that good? We can use it.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Just to understand. So if we, if this site plan approval goes forward and has those easements and has the cut through and it's an easement and Dr. Castro leaves and the property is bought by someone else and they want to close it again, they would have to come back.
It's in perpetuity for the property, because forever.
The easement goes further, if they want to.
I think you're asking two different questions.
Right.
The easement runs with the land.
Right.
But if another use comes up.
A extra use permit.
Yeah, I was just looking at, like, for you, Mr. Shep, like if someone else wanted to close off and then you end up having all those problems that you had.
None of us can, you know, ask, alter these.
They would have to come back to us. So that we could hopefully note that if it ever came back up.
Well, it's probably not even a site plan issue if somebody bought the Palmer House and wanted to block off that driveway. That would be something between Shep and the future owner.
And vice versa.
Yeah, right.
Well, unless, unless this board wants to say, wants, wants.
Well, because of all the problems then with East Genesee Street and police and the blockage because of the not being able to get trucks in there and everything. I wonder if you want to. We want to avoid, right, but if it ever changed down.
Once we put the parking lot in, I can turn around. He can do his thing, I can do my thing, I think we're all good. You're having the discussion to be bad. And even if I sell it, it's going to go with it.
Yeah, maybe this is, I wasn't at the last meeting of the before.
The best that we can do is make it a matter of public record and mandate that it be filed with the Anadota County Clerk so that everybody who buys that property or Tom's property will be aware of this permanent easement and have to abide by it.
Yeah, respectfully, the reason there was a problem before, because the easement wasn't formally signed.
Right.
So the other guy did what he did, pissed Tom off, and I don't blame Tom for it. And the guy cut his, you know, cut off his nose by the face.
Yep.
Right, why would you do that? Unless you're doing it to be a jerk. Now, if you're doing it to be a jerk, you go back and say no and you get several parts to enforce it. That's, that's how you do it. That's the matter of where we want to go.
Okay, right.
From my point of view, the easement is more, much more for the benefit of Palmer House. We have our exit on Hunt Drive, we don't care really.
That was my thought too. Yeah, that was my thought.
To bore you with more history, the town landlord has created the RSO in nineteen ninety. We were the first ones through under that. The Anadota County Planning Board hated the zone. They did not want it. They wanted the town to mandate that a service road be built at the rear of all the properties and then emptied into a traffic light. Town and landlord said, no, we're not doing that. We want to preserve historic structures. That's our main intent. So for about five years, the county planning board, regardless of the merits of any case, denied any application. They didn't care what was going on. What we were attempting to do is to show that here are two property owners cooperating with each other and making some common traffic areas, didn't do any good.
Okay. Keeping that on track, is there anyone else who wanted to speak at this open hearing? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close and second by Arnie, who beat you by a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Public hearing is hereby closed. Did anyone have a question of the doctor or his representative regarding this?
No, I have no questions, but I do want to compliment them on their cooperative efforts working together to get this done. Because I know the previous owner had a deal with it, very difficult. So this is really a big step forward.
And since I wasn't at the last meeting, I also want to compliment you on the building itself. I've been watching it during its progress and it looks very nice.
And I just think as a contingency, the easements need to be recorded prior to the final approval of the site plan and accessory use permit.
No. That's going to, I necessarily hold things up. We can, we can tell them that is, and that is part of this disposition and whatever we do, that within thirty days thereafter, that is going to be filed and that will have proof of filing, they'll give you a recent filing receipt.
I have it to be turned over.
Okay, I, I don't want to hold that up unnecessarily.
Thank you.
At this point, I would entertain a motion relative to the site plan and relative to accessory use, if someone, Valerie?
For the site plan. Approval of the site plan and accessory.
Second by Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In the condition of filing.
And it's a condition on filing within thirty days of today's date. Why would you say no to me then? Well, you wanted it filed before we decided anything criminal.
That's what you just said.
No, I just said it was conditional, that that, before it was finalized, it would get, doesn't matter.
We thought the motion is finalized.
It's fine, it's fine. Then I misunderstood you. What we just passed was exactly what I'm saying.
Easement agreement is reviewed by council.
Okay, all right. Dr. LaCastro, you're all set.
Thank you.
I will. Let me meet Dr. LaCastro in a reminder, I'm recusing myself from the next discussion in any event due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, and doctor, we routinely approve these accessory use permits for seven years. So that would mean you need to come back to us in seven years. And all things being equal, if there's no problems and no complaints being filed, as a general rule, we would approve.
You didn't remind me or do I?
Oh, Lisa.
I'll remind you, don't worry. Don't worry.
The next item on our agenda is an application by Renid, Renid Ski Dental. This is relative to a site plan and accessory use permit at seventy-two eleven East Genesee Street. Is there somebody here on behalf of the doctor? Hi there.
My name is Aaron Cole. Well, I'm a general architect in the LC.
Okay.
Also, well, transitioning out of being a main architect. And Dr. Baranowski is the.
Dr. Baranowski.
Oh, Dr. Baranowski.
Hi, Doug.
I don't know where.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Not rich, but I get it.
So Dr. Baranowski is in the process of purchasing seventy-two eleven East Genesee Street. And part of her holding conditions is to have, by word Google. It's also been taken out of the agenda for her. It's a process.
Now, what, just for us uneducated folks, what exactly is that?
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm a specialist in full mile renovations and complex inland restoration. So when general dentists come up know what to do, they send cases my way.
So she is looking to do an interior renovation to three thousand square feet of the building. Currently, I think there was three or four tents in that space. She's looking to take over the complete building for her dental operation.
Will there be any apartments in there at all?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, it's going to be purely a dental operation. Her operatories, treatment rooms, they take up one wing and then the back office, laboratories, and her office and staff. They would maintain the existing garage. So three thousand square feet of office filled out and then exterior renovations and new exterior siding, new windows, new roof. And then take off the existing.
He's talking a little louder.
Yeah, the plan to remove the existing media accessibility ramp and put a single run up to get that existing that away from the entrance of the building. Existing parkings, kind of to re-scribe. Yeah, a lot of scratches gone. There's, there's fifteen spaces that gather.
The garage still go out the way it is now?
Yeah, they don't plan on, there wasn't a plan to change that. Staying in that space, but the building is a little larger than what you need for a complete operation. So at the same cost, we're going to infill that garage space, but there's enough space within the building to serve this.
You're going to completely renovate the interior?
Yes.
You're going to change it all into one office?
Correct.
And the exterior, that's what we're seeing here on Z two?
Yes.
What you're going to do?
Yep.
So you are really changing the whole face of the building?
The roof lines will maintain, it will replace the existing roof because it's massive, it's massive.
And the front entrance door, does that say?
Store.
Yeah.
It'll stay in location, but we're going to replace it with, right now, it's really a residential style door. It don't hold up well to commercial openers. So we're going to probably go with some sort of storefront door in a nicer pattern than just, you know, the original style of prints. But something that's robust enough to be able to handle an eighty-eight over. In the past, we've done projects that had fire blast doors that were still more of a residential. They just don't hold up to the energy usage and commercial elevation. They look nicer. They just, they're not designed for.
There's no handicap accessibility right now.
There is, but if someone really went out there with a digital level and, you know, I'll take measure to see how.
That's very cool.
The horseshoe on Fayette Drive.
Yes.
What's the purpose of keeping that?
The secondary side, initially we thought, even for Dr. Barnoski, parking private.
Step entrance. Ultimately have two of them, one in the back and one, we didn't want, I didn't want to change a building in a major way since my lease is going to be terminated pretty soon in other spot and I understand that major innovations are not going to be approved. So I'm all right with making the building look nice without any major changes to get you approved.
It's just that we've, we've had concerns about the traffic on Fayette Drive getting to Genesee Street. That's all. That's the reason I asked that.
I wonder if we, like, the parking spaces, it might give a little, right, since it. It's one space for two hundred square feet and I think it's like a little over fifteen when I did the math. So that would count. And then my other question was if the garage counts as a parking space?
My fault. This is not, doesn't see a lot of patients as, as a specialist, I see one or two patients at the same time. It's not a regular general dentist office where seven or ten people are seen at the same time. I cannot just, I'd see different treatments. So I'm simultaneous, I see two patients maximum.
So would you understand? Great.
Oh, yeah, it said on the application, it said ten patients on Tuesday and Wednesday.
But it's ten from eight thirty to five.
Okay.
It's total ten people are seen.
So not at a time.
Not at the same time.
Not at the same time. Okay.
But a maximum of approximately ten patients per day and almost two days. And the other two days, I think it's two weeks.
Yeah, one to four.
Am I right in examining your plans that you're not going to be increasing the size of the rear parking lot? You're not going to be increasing the impervious surface?
No, we plan to leave it, leave it as is.
As is.
Yes. I think we'll restripe. Some people can see the stripe.
Yeah, and she's using that drive for herself.
I didn't know if it was like drop off pickup or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's not, yeah, that's definitely. Because the AAs.
I don't have, this is just a random question. Okay, my guess is that building's been there so long that a script was never done. It looks like there's no stormwater detention retention. Is that something we need to look at at this point or is that? Or is it?
They're not making any changes to the site. The wreck said, you know, if you're not.
Which they're not. There's no more purpose. Okay.
I've never seen any water there.
We, when we done the, yeah, so the last applicant, you know, they had, they had shown a change to the parking.
Right.
Yeah. To make recent impervious, as we'd say. The flash to mitigate that, especially in this area.
Okay, all right. I was just curious. That's fine. Okay, thanks. Did anyone have questions? I think it's an improvement.
Yeah.
Right. What's the?
It's February twenty-eighth next year.
Oh.
Oh.
So that's, that's to be occupied and.
Right. If the board has no additional questions of the developer of our left attack here. I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing. So. Second. Motion by Ann, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm being told that the date for the public hearing will be on May twenty-third. We have the county for county recommendations and we should have that back by then. So if you're okay, we'll proceed forward with a public hearing on the twenty-third.
And if there's no staunch opposition to this from the public, can we expect possible approval of that?
Anything's possible.
I need to start answering that.
Sure you knew the answer already.
Anything's possible. And such opposition. It depends on what the app, the nature of the opposition is, what we're being told that would influence what we need to do.
And you never know, there may be questions about the traffic, like which got up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Things of that might be addressed.
But you know, there's only one, one person there now, so it's true.
Right.
Right.
If someone improved the traffic.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, and on his office.
You're welcome. Thank you all for coming.
Good to see you.
Yeah, next item on our agenda is an application by Guy Pittman. This is an initial presentation, so we have not heard from him before. It's pertaining to a site plan and he indicates he would like to add a thirty foot by fifty foot barn to his existing site, which is sixty-nine eighty-five Colomer Road, East Syracuse. Hello, sir.
Good morning.
Should I presume you are Mr. Pittman?
You call the guy, please. I am the owner of a company with my son. Could we not hear you six five? Could miss him. And it's representing Joe. It's the biggest thing is like, I want to commend all you on your character. I have never been born, I've been to many, many meetings, board meetings, and so on and so forth, and so many stuff. You guys all have great attitudes. I'm saying that just for the heart. It's nice to see people get along like this because usually people chop with a bit. I just want to say that you guys, you're good people. So that's not proud of your team either.
That's just what I was thinking.
By all means, I hope the company is hard, is our number one component, because I am a builder. I've done, I've done a ton of work on Skinny House Lake, Chisoka Lake, Losco Lake, the areas. Goes to a big series of pole barns. I used to work for a company called LiveWire, which I turned off. They were a tough company. They went through a lot of changes. Well, two, you guys, four, Joe, is it, we're looking at cold storage at his Collin address. It's all it's going to be. There's nothing there but pole barn, concrete floor, door to get in, overhead door to back trucking, almost twice, and that's it. It's a very simple thirty by fifty building and it's all steel structure, except for the interior, true pole barn structure. That's all it is. It's, it's a, the area itself, any runoff, move, stuff like that, it's not taking advantage. Vector of the standings. A board in bed. So.
And steel roof, I presume?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we are looking at four windows. There'll be two on each side, one man door, which would be the closest to his business. It has now already established.
Doug, do we need to be concerned about runoff?
A couple, couple things. I, I think the runoff's going to be fine. Don't see a survey. Looks like Tom Jones did it. I remember seeing the survey before.
Yeah, he, he does have a survey because he just took, I can see, it was last February, twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
The other thing is that there are railings back there.
There is.
So, I mean, so you could, you could ask. Right.
Yes. Yeah.
Just super close on the map. I don't really care about problems. So they are this far.
Absolutely.
So they're going to be.
Okay. Way up on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think if she just. Right back in there. So I think if we just, if you just. Yeah. That's all.
Questions? Any more questions? Just one of the, well. Is the attic just half of the building?
The attic at this point in time, if you want me to be aware of this, it's, he's learned, as we've been going on, we gave the choice of the attic process. I kind of argued with him a little bit on it. Because you take a forklift into a building, you take the forklift out, what's it want to do? Wants to hit the bottom, what's over there? Scissor presses were introduced to him halfway through the building and the attic at the back of it, just thought you knew that story back there. When he talked to me about the racking system, Joe was very clear how important the racking system was. I said, you need forklift and scissor.